And it gives us an opportunity to be inclusive in ADA. We'll have some things in there that a child in a wheelchair, a child that had less mobility, or special needs would be able to go out there and enjoy the same playground with other kids. We found that that was an imperative for us. We felt like we needed to do that. And this allowed for us to save quite a bit of money and get that all down under the number that we had budgeted initially when it came to the recreation center. Number 10 is Resolution Number 25-04, and it's a public hearing, and it's for the Economic Development Agreement for SMD Steel LLC. Rainbow City will agree to grant up to 400 loads of site prep material for the city's chert pit during construction of the company's new facility. SMD Steel will have a capital investment in the city of eight to nine million dollars, and this is a time and place for a public hearing for anyone that would like to speak for or against that. Anyone that would like to speak, we'll start with against. Anyone that would like to speak against it? Anyone at all? Have to ask three terms. Anyone? Anyone that'd like to speak for it? Now, I think that we do have some people here that would like to speak for that. Suki, you are great. You can come up. If you would, just give us your name and your address so that we'll have it for our public record.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Suki Colley. I'm the managing partner for SMD Steel. I'm Drake Ridgeway, I'm the Alabama's Operations Manager. So, a quick brief rundown on our company, SMD Steel, stands for Sustainability Makes a Difference. We came into business in 2022, late 2021, with a vision to service the power transmission industry. So, we are heavily involved. We started out by our plant in Mississippi, where we process a lot of hardware and all the parts that goes into the utility power transmission system. So, our customers really wanted us to expand our customer base and assist them in making poles, steel poles, and making more hardware. So, back in October, we hired Drake as our Operations Manager for the Alabama facility. We have a temporary location right now in Snead, Alabama, where we are servicing our existing customers, but we have a need to grow and expand and add good value-added jobs. So, we are looking into acquiring a piece of property at the Rainbow City Industrial Park, which serves our purpose. You know, we are really excited for giving us an opportunity to come and talk to everybody here. We've had great, great success and great communication with everyone here, and we really feel it's going to be a multi-phase project for us. But we really feel that at the end of the day, we'll be able to add over 100 jobs, high-paying jobs with good pay, good benefits for this town, and we are really excited to be part of this journey with all of you over here. Drake, can I add something?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody who I've told you again. We would love to be part of this community. We'd like to bring these highly skilled, good-paying jobs to this town.
And Drake, be honest, it gives you a chance to come home.
Yeah, that's definitely a plus. It's not too far from the middle school area. That'd be great.
That's right. Drake, just for the point of information, Drake is a local boy. He was educated around here, and this gives him an opportunity not to have to travel to go to work, and his children are here in Southside and Rainbow Middle, and so we know that we're going to be able to pull him back home. Drake, just tell us again about these jobs. You know, you mentioned that them being skilled labor jobs and not just a standard manufacturing job.
Yeah, these are, our welding processes and manufacturing processes don't really limit their self-weld automation. So, these are highly skilled, you know, professional people that'll be carrying out the work. The welding is fully manual, all D11 specifications through AWS, all the equipment, where it is somewhat automated, there's a lot of user input, operator input. It's just, it's a very specialized field. We use very specialized equipment to make these products. As you can imagine, for this type of industry, it's heavily regulated on what you can and can't do. It's heavily inspected, but it's just, it's just good jobs. Hopefully, we can use the technical schools around here, whether it be the county or Gadsden State or Ross State. That's how myself at a young age was brought into this industry, mentored, and that's what we hope to bring here as well. You know, I would love to see young people get in this industry in the right way, good-paying jobs, that they want to continue to educate themselves in these fields.
Yeah, I think that's a key element, is just knowing that you're a product of our local education system, and it puts you in a position to be in a very technical field that is highly skilled as well. And I think it's very encouraging knowing what we've got over with Alan Smith at Gadsden State Community College and that workforce development program. This is going to plug in very well with that, and we'll be able to feed you guys some very, very qualified employees. And I don't know how much more excited we could be other than to know that we can put our own people back to work.
Yes, sir. If it wasn't for my agricultural teachers in school, I wouldn't be here. But we do know quite a few fellows over at the Welding College, Brian Nelson and Don Owensby. They have a business now in Glencoe, Northeast Welding Technologies. We're working with them already. But yeah, I just, I would like to keep stuff local and provide good, you know, good jobs with a good work environment and culture for some folks around here. That's my goal.
We appreciate you guys. We appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you all.
This is an exciting time for all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Resolution, anyone else that'd like to speak for? Anyone in council that'd like to speak for? I think I've done enough, so I'll move on to voting on the resolution. Is there a motion, a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? There we go. We'll be ready to move on now, guys.
Be ready.
Number 11 is budget revision for the library to increase to reflect a $5,000 community service grant awarded by Representative Mac Butler and $1,000 donated by the Rainbow City Coin Club. $1,000 of it will go to audiovisual account shown, $1,500 to go to equipment and tools of the account shown, $1,000 will go to supplies in general, and $2,000 to repairs and maintenance, and $500 will go to the summer reading and community outreach. And I'd entertain a motion that we do that budget revision.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 12 is budget revision for the police department, and it's a reimbursement of $6,000 from Underground Railroad for digital investigations computer and $8,426 collected from calendar sales, copies of reports, record verifications, and sex offender registrations. That would go to a capital outlay account shown for $6,000 and the miscellaneous account shown for $8,426 and 15 cents, and I'd entertain a motion that we do those budget revisions as a whole.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 13 is a sponsorship request from United Waste Success by Six, the 20th Annual Girlfriend Gala, and what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor Girlfriend Gala at the Silver Sister level in the amount of $1,500.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 14 is department reports. Do we have any? Kenneth, do you want to update us a little bit on what you've got going on? We just need your name, address, and title.
Kenneth Payne, Rainbow City Recycling Program. I come in here without anything to talk about, and now I've got a list.
Okay.
I would like to talk about nut sales. Rainbow City Lions Club nut sales is now going on, and they're winding down, and we have reduced the prices. If it was $12, they're 11, and so we still got some stuff left. So, anything, my location is City Hall, Postnet, Wind South, and Exchange Bank. What we have left, we will send to partnership Pancake Day, which will be April the 1st.
April 1st.
April the 1st will be Pancake Day, Lions Club Pancake Day. That was, and that also, we'll come up with a cleanup day. Most of the time, it's the end of April, 1st to May, whatever works out the best for the ever one. So, just keep that in mind. Recycling. We just got four more trailers in, and Jefferson gets one of them, and we're on pizzas, doesn't got one. So, we, there's 34 trailers. So, that's a pretty big, and I do about seven, eight to 10 pickups early morning before, I call them early mornings. Sometimes it's early morning, it's done gone, but anyway. So, a trailer, I think Philip went and got our last trailer. So, Philip, he's a, he's a big help to me on recycling, so, and a lot of other people. I ask for help and I get help. So, thank you.
We appreciate you, Kenneth. Thank you for all you do. There's no doubt that Pancake Day is always a great opportunity for our Lions Club to raise money for their charity, and we ask that you participate as much as you possibly can. Anyone else have anything? Any of the other department heads? I'll move on to the council member reports and comments, and I'll start with Mr. Hopper.
Thank you, man. I'm going to go a little bit different than I normally do. Most time, you'd all talk about things that are going in the community, involves our children, whatever. But, you know, back in November, I got elected to the National League of Cities, and when you're on that program there, on their Board of Advisors, or Directors, rather, you've got to serve on certain committees. Well, I've got a new committee, Small City Committee, and we had a first meeting this week, and I found it very interesting. The biggest thing to take out of it, there's 487 of us that's part of this throughout the 49 states. Alaska's the only state that's not represented in the National League. It was, makes you feel pretty good when we, I know what we've accomplished here in the four years that we've been in office, listen to these other cities who basically have the same problems we have. You know, they have the same problem as, with trying to get eateries in because people can't, the property owners have got the property too high for them to buy. So, it's kind of fun to do that. But I found interesting was, we've got a sister city in Texas who does not have a downtown district either, and they're just like us. And we're going, I'm going to reach out to her when I'm up there in DC on March 9th and see how they're conquering because they've got the same thing, but they don't have a 20-year plan like we do. So, it's going to be interesting. And I just found that that was interesting to listen to other people throughout the country and realize we're just, we're ahead of them. Well, if you believe it or not, you had to be there, we're ahead of them because things that they complain about and gripe about, we have the same problems, but we're also fixing those problems. And the biggest thing, though, to me, that tickled me the most, and I know it's going to make some people up north a little unhappy when I say this, small cities by the national standards is 50,000 and above. So, if the city is below 50,000, it's called a small city, which means every city in Edgewall County is a small city. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start out by saying that we are extremely excited about SMD Steel. I graduated from the technical program at Gadsden State and have an associate's in electrical technology from there, and Deb Reynolds and Jack Mayfield are two instructors that still to this day stand out in my mind. I think that Gadsden State is very undervalued a lot of times in our community because I can remember when I graduated with my associate's degree, I had already made plans to go to Auburn. But those people at Gadsden State work so hard to set these people up for success, and I can remember being 18, 19 years old when I finished that program, and it was hard for me to make the decision to go to Auburn because of the numbers that were put in front of my face. And I think that people don't realize how important skilled labor is in our community. I think it's going to be an unbelievable partnership between you guys and our advanced manufacturing program at Gadsden State. Just overwhelmingly excited about it. The next thing I want to say, and the last thing I want to say, our Explorer program and our police department, I'm an advisor on that program, and our police department has done a phenomenal job with our youth in that program. We have had a great turnout. Two Thursdays ago, I attended our meeting. We had several who were here for the first time. Our police officers are working really, really, really hard to get these kids involved in our police department. That is for anyone between the ages of 14 and 20. You can start that program at any time. They meet on Thursday nights at 6:00. You do not have to come to any formal orientation or anything like that. So, if you know anybody in that age range that would be interested in something like that, please send them our way on Thursday night. We would love to see them. That's all I have.
Ms. Bedwell?
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say that as we all have already expressed our excitement about you guys coming to Rainbow City, one of my things about it is not only is it going to be a great partnership, but I think about our children and about the education, as Jameson was talking about, and about the opportunities. You know, for so long, we hear that you have to move out of town to get a good job, or you have to move away, and so, just like Drake was talking about, I'm just so excited for the future of our kids. That's just, just amazing. One of the things I was just sitting here thinking about also was the fact that as you go down our agenda and you look at the things that are taking place, we're excited about our rec center, and we're excited about that for our community. The choice to do that, the decision to do that, was really based on our long-term plan and also was based on listening to people talk and what they would like to have and what they need. And again, it was all about family and family entertainment. So, you know, as y'all know, my background and what I think about that and how I think that everybody should want to be in Rainbow City and that we should have stuff to teach our children and the people here, the values and the morals that we all have. So, I'm just very thankful to be a part of that opportunity. I also want to thank everyone. You know, I've missed, I wasn't counting, but maybe two, maybe three council meetings over the last few months. I haven't felt well, had some issues and had some surgery. I am feeling back to normal, and I just wanted to say to each one of you, there's so many of you, all of you have called me, checked on me, had, and been remembering me in your prayers, and I'm just very thankful for that. So, I appreciate all your support.
Mr. Vice? First of all, welcome back.
Thanks.
Good to see you. So glad you're good, and we're excited to have you back. And man, it's a great day to be a resident of Rainbow City, to serve on this amazing council. I'm looking at all of the things. First of all, welcome, SMD, Mr. Colley, Mr. Ridgeway. We're extremely excited that you guys have decided to pick our city as a place to do business, and it says a lot for not just the people up here, but the community in general, and we really appreciate you guys coming out, and we can't say enough about that. Thank you, and we're excited. I know during the election, the splash pad was brought up a lot, and it's so exciting that we're able to bring that to fruition. And not just that, it's, when you're talking about young people needing things to do, I coached football for 18 years at the high school level, the P W level, we won't talk about that, but then also coaching soccer and coaching baseball, and I think I've coached everything but basketball and wrestling, but I'm not volunteering for that by any means. But having said that, to get kids off the X-boxes and outside or in a gym exercising, doing what kids need to do is paramount. And when companies come to a community, they want to see a quality of life that exists that's provided for them. I wouldn't want to come to a town where my kids couldn't walk on a walking trail, and not just kids, older people. I love being at Vivian Maddox or at the sports complex or the walking trail and seeing people in their 80s and 90s out walking their dogs. This is the kind of place, this town, where you can do that. And I think that it's extremely important to realize that we have a mayor and a council, that that's one of our top priorities because it all, it's all part of this plan that we talked about. One of the first things we did was create this master plan. Caught a lot of pushback from some people on that, spent a lot of money, but this money's come back tenfold and will continue to come back, and I think it was a wise decision, and I give Mayor Taylor the credit for that. You know, it's one of those things where too many towns, we look at bits and pieces. My older son, I love him to death, but he called me, said, "I've been watching y'all's council meetings. Will you please vote no on something? You look like a yes man." And I said, "There's nothing to vote no against because this council all has the exact same goal, and that is to serve the people of Rainbow City." and that is to serve the people of Rainbow City." We have disagreements, but we talk about that in work session. And again, I'm sure if we felt strong enough about something to express our opposition, we would and would be welcome to do that. But it is a situation where Rainbow City is moving forward, and it's all about the residents and the choices that they've made and the people up here as well. It's a pleasure serving with you guys. And Beth, thank you for everything you do. You're a huge part of that. And Anita, once again, welcome back, and God bless you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank Jeff Prince. The last meeting, I was going to the Economic Development Association of Alabama's winter conference, and that's always an opportunity for us to go down there and find the people that are actually the ones that create solutions. It's the League of Municipalities and the meetings that we go to, where we get to intermingle with elected officials is always a good time. But these are decision-makers. This is the people that are with the DECA and the Department of Commerce and then those economic development driving people that are actually buying the property and putting up the manufacturing. And to be able to go down there and say that we were able to do some of our own economic development in the case of SMD was a little bit of a bragging right. And we were, we were given our accolades in doing that. And I think it goes back to being able to sit in a room with a company that has vision and that is looking towards creating a sustainable product and knowing that we can, we can find some common ground and be able to help each other to bring jobs to our area and those being skilled labor jobs. So, just thankful for Jeff Prince. Jeff's on a business media, or business trip this week, and we just hope well for him. One of the things that continually comes up, and Mr. Weiss actually mentioned it, was quality of life. There's almost this move towards, and I know they're constantly renaming things. You know, it used to be industrial development, now it's economic development. It used to be quality of life, and now it's quality of place. And if you look at what we're doing around here with our recreation, with our, the things that we're doing for the people that live here, as well as creating good, high-paying jobs for the people that allow them to sustain their lifestyle, I think we are really developing a quality of place. And so, I think that's one of the opportunities that we have as an elected body. And again, I just have to say, going back to Randy's son, I think he's dead wrong, and I'd like for him to hear this out of my mouth. The truth is that I have a council that I can go to and ask them if they would allow me to present them a finished product, an ability to take a body of work and set it in front of them, and them have the wherewithal to be able to understand exactly what's in front of them. And I don't spoon-feed them. I don't have to, because they're very wise people, and they're doing what's best for their community. And with that, I just have to say that I appreciate the hard work that they do. April 5th is our Pancake Day with the Lions Club. Friday, February 21st is the ribbon cutting for S5 Elite Performance and Physical Therapy. That's at 260 Wiggins Street at 11 o'clock a.m. And with that, I have to say that Rainbow City is known for showing up for our ribbon cuttings, and we welcome every business that comes into this city. And we do that through the help of my staff and this council. We show up to make sure that they understand that we are so thrilled that they are coming to our area to do their business and sell their wares. Friday, February 21st through the 23rd is weather preparedness weekend. Monday, March 10th, there'll be no council meeting. The council will be attending the National League of Cities in Washington, DC. And just so you'll know, while we're up there, we always have a full slate of meetings. We make sure that we see all of our representatives, our congressmen, as well as our senators. And we go up there with, honestly, with our hand put out. And that's so that we can bring back some of the federal taxpaying money that you so hard worked for and introduced into the government. And it's our job to go up there and find a way to bring it back and do that for special projects and the needs of our law enforcement, fire, and our, just everything about our quality of place. And with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.